Our purpose for being here today is to solicit comments or concerns as relation to increase on the ferries. Every question that you offer will be written down by Mr. Sharon Landry, who's our attorney, and we're going to take every question into consideration, then we're going to present it to the council, who's going to look at it, elaborate on it, and then come with a final answer, whether they're approved, a rate increase that's being proposed, or do you have another idea? So, please, at this time, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, let us know. We have our president, Mr. Thomas Corbin, District Two Representative, Mr. Paul Black, District Five, Ben D'Uscel. Ben D'Uscel. Ben D'Uscel. Four, Mr. Irving Juno, Mr. Joel Hartman, who's our captain, I mean manager of our ferry department, Michael Powell, who's our P.I.O. So, we're here just to hear comments, or questions, or concerns that you may have. As some of you may or may not know, there's a proposal to charge a dollar both directions, East Bank, West Bank, on both ferries, Pointe du Hasse and Belle Chase. That's something that's being debated. There are some exceptions that can be exempt, those who are 65 years old or older, those on Medicare, I think it's Medicare, Medicare, I always get mixed up, and also those who are disabled, so those are those who get a discounted rate that was proposed right now. Nothing is in stone, nothing is in stone, all this is just debate right now, discussion. So, please feel free at this time, if you have any questions about the ferry, Mr. Joel is here, and what I want to do in a few minutes, I'm just going to give to him, to give you a brief synopsis on the ferry operations, whatever way he wants to elaborate, the cost, what we take in, what we put out, whatever he feels he want to share with you. We're not allowing it to come at this time, then after that, if anyone has any comments, we'll take them. All right, Joel?
If anybody has any questions on anything, we're trying to offset some of the costs of fuel and stuff like that, so we can keep on and keep service, you know, for both sides of the river. Fuel is, right now, is down, but hopefully it goes up and causes more to operate the ferries. It's probably about a million dollars a year operate, if we would operate that one big ferry, it's about a million dollars a year just for that one boat, if we'd operate on a regular schedule. So, that's what we're trying to do with collecting tolls on both sides of the river.
Let me share this with you, based on information I have. Belle Chase Two, which is the ferry we're using, Pointe du Hasse, we run in that ferry, it costs roughly $214,000 a year in fuel to operate that ferry, and that's $118 a day, 30-minute schedule, and on weekends, and after seven, they run it on a hour schedule, holiday and weekends on an hour schedule. The Pointe du Hasse ferry, MV Pointe du Hasse, which is a smaller ferry that's located up in Belle Chase, it costs us roughly $442,000 to run that ferry, 20 hours a day, 30-minute shifts. And Belle Chase Pride, which is our big boat, they cost roughly $1,100,000 to run that boat, 20 hours a day, at 30-minute shifts. So, that's what we're looking at, just in fuel costs, to run those boats. Now, it's been proposed to dock the Pride on Pointe du Hasse, we're discussing that. That would help defer some of the costs, because it's been proposed to run one ferry up here in Belle Chase, one in Pointe du Hasse, and park the other ferry to use it as a spare. So, that's something that's being discussed also, because it's been suggested that we eliminate split shift that's been operating up in Belle Chase. So, if things go as scheduled, as being proposed, we've got one ferry in Belle Chase, one ferry in Pointe du Hasse, and one spare boat in case of the happen. So, at this time, I'll get to any questions.
Wondering how much revenue you get from tolls right now? How much of the proposed increase is going to bring in? How much money we get from the state for the ferries? How much extra money will you clear after the increases, you know?
Yes.
I was young when that.
Okay, well, based on, based on... Yeah, Charlie, he had to change. Based on the figure that Mr. Burke, who was councilman also, he did some figures, and he said we bring in roughly between $700,000 and $900,000 a year in added revenue, based on that, that's what's been proposed. Now, with that, a lot of things haven't been taken into consideration, disability factor with those 65 years and over, as well as those on Medicare or Medicare, I keep getting mixed up, please forgive me for that. So, that wasn't factored in also, because what had happened, we did a study, we didn't even study, previous administration did a study, and it has so many... We did, the last one we did, there was 1,400 calls came on a ferry during that day, one day. Out of 1,400 calls, 400, we received $414, because everyone else had race stickers. And that's an issue we have, everybody with these race stickers on these cars. And so, out of a possible $1,400, we're going to collect $400. So, that's some of the things we're looking at, to kind of finish things back where it needs to be, because everybody's riding free business right now. And so, with Pointe du Hasse, there was never a fee on the Pointe du Hasse, and some people said because of the ferry, some people said because of the rail, but we addressed those problems also, to make sure.
Yeah, if I remember right, they couldn't collect the toll on a Pointe du Hasse ferry, because it didn't meet, the ramp didn't meet specifications.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we're hearing all.
So, are you going to be able to, are you going to fix the ramp? Where, 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 what do we charge? Trucks can...
Well, heavy vehicles go.
Well, it's not so much the ramps, it's the ferry itself can't hold that load because of the stability of that ferry. That's the reason we can't cross big trucks right now. The ramps are fine crossing the bigger truck, it's the ferry itself. We can't cross bigger trucks, because of the stability on the ferry itself.
I was told it was the ramps.
Ramps are rated, I think it was what, um...
Well, I understand, well, how can you use the same ferry up here as down road?
We don't use that ferry down there.
So, why, the Pointe du Hasse ferry is used...
That's a little Belle Chase Two down there.
The Pointe du Hasse ferry has been down road, and they wouldn't let large vehicles on?
We do. We do cross different trucks and all when the Pointe du Hasse ferry is down there.
Well, I mean...
We can't go over the rated tonnage of the ramp itself, you know, we can't go over that, that rated tonnage, you know, but when the small boat's down there, we can't cross the tonnage that the ramp will hold because of the ferry itself.
Well, I was told they're collecting tolls in Pointe du Hasse.
We're not doing that.
No, why walk away?
I don't know, I mean, that was years ago.
I was told because it didn't meet Coast Guard specifications.
At the time, not all our ferries were certified either, Coast Guard certified, we only had... So, it's not even an... When Fire came along is when we started, we started collecting tolls when Fire came, which we ended up getting Pointe du Hasse certified, and then Belle Chase Two was certified. The only boat we could get certified at the time was the Louisiana. Louisiana.
Here's an answer to your question you asked before, sir. So, last year, we collected $114,000. If we collect $1 each way, the potential is $750,000, that's just in Belle Chase. They did a one-day audit, like Director Giles said, 1,358 calls crossed, and we only collected $418, so it was an issue with the red stickers.
So, you're going to get rid of the red stickers?
Yes.
Yes.
So...
Everybody, there is an exempt list, like Director Giles was saying, I think it's 65 and older.
Those on Medicare, Medicare, Medicare.
Right, and then on-duty, on-duty emergency responders.
She's a teacher at Phoenix, she's talking about $10.
I know. We also got a big raise, yeah, she's a major director of the big raises.
But she sure just went up, the ferry's going up like them.
Well, what happened, even our employees, who's exempt, they got to start paying also. And so, that was, that's sort of a red flag, because if we allow teachers, they're going to allow our employees, and so, we're trying to make sure it's fair across the board. I do know they have their school bus, you might not arrive at bus.
Not every day.
Yeah, and that, because buses get off free, you know, and if you was in a parish vehicle or in a school board vehicle during the course of work hour, then that's exempt. But the teachers and even our employees of PPT, they're not exempt, they have to pay that dollar always also.
Now, my brother went to the breakaway meeting, maybe you misunderstood, but he said that the proposed fee was $2 on east side direction.
No.
$1 or $1.
The order that's written has that in it, one that's on the table right now. But that's not necessarily, I guess, with...
Okay, it's, what I told him in the very beginning was, we wasn't trying to mirror Chalamet. Chalamet was charging $2 a vehicle plus a dollar a year to cross that ferry. We didn't want to mirror that, because we're in a different entity, we're different halls down here. Our proposal was a dollar always, and all passengers are free, all those who walk on ferries, that's free also, and we wasn't charging, no, we charged a dollar on motorcycles. So, we wasn't trying to mirror Chalamet, a lot of the stuff we was doing with Chalamet was doing, but we're not. It's all indifferent.
And what about the, how much money comes from the state now?
I don't have that information offhand, but I don't think it's that much to offset what we're looking at. I promise you.
Well, you're saying offset? I'm already getting it, you know, I'm just...
I don't have the information in my hand right now, I'd get it from you.
You know, but I mean, all that's got to be taken into consideration, you know, because I...
Let me just, let me just... See, after taking everything into consideration, we lose about $4 million a year, net revenue versus expenses, after all of the funds that come into the ferry fund. So, as far as the total, you know, you're going to save these $1.8 million in fuel to run those ferries. This is not, this rate increase is not anticipated to even cover the fuel cost, much less the operation and the manpower. So, you know, if you compare this to the Chalamet rates, you know, we're a bargain, we're like half. And, you know, we would not like to do it this way, but we have no other choice but to do this, to try to get some cost back of at least the fuel.
You said you're losing money, you mean, you're meaning that you're in the red on the ferry, you know?
What I mean is that it doesn't support itself, and so, we have to go to the general fund and put those funds to supplement the ferry operation. And so, when we take the general fund funds, you know, sometimes we'll be robbing drainage, or we'll be robbing something else that we already have other priorities. The ferry is, you know, going to be there, some people have advocated eliminating some of the ferries, which, you know, we have not gotten to. So, what we're doing now is just a basic baby step in trying to cover the fuel costs.
But are you proposing to increase it and decrease the service by going to just one ferry up here?
Yes, one ferry in them all day long, and one ferry in Pointe du Hasse all day long. He can tell you the exact hours. The split shift ferry will not be run under our proposal, and if you look at the history for the last 14 to 18 months, we've only had one ferry 95% of the time.
And it's in the vehicles.
It is, and it's going to remain about the same.
You got people up and down Belle Chase Highway waiting.
Yeah, and the situation also is that we'll see how many people will avoid the free ride and go another way, because now we've got a lot of people that come this way, so they don't have to pay.
Okay, like I said, I'm just worried about, this is going to be, you know, killer for the working, working guy, you know? It's, 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 it's not like, like you're getting a free ride, you know, I mean, that's a public service, it's like a bridge, so you're talking about, you know, saving money on the, on the ferry, and it's, it's not just the East Bank thing, there's people from the West Bank, East Bank, down road, up road, using those ferries, you know, a lot of people were saying, you know, like the East Bank is, we're going to make sure they have a ferry, you know? It's not, it's, it's a parish thing, it's going to hurt the parish, but the main thing is going to hurt, it's going to hurt, hurt the working guy, the guy, you know? Somebody trying to make a hustle and, you know, go to work at Popeyes or, or even, you know, even, you know, teachers and, you know? I mean, I worked in oil refinery, and, you know, I made good money, but that extra money would be, would hurt me. I can imagine somebody that's, you know...
We're talking about probably the difference about $20 a month.
Well, you know...
So, you did charge a dollar now.
The revenue that the parish is going to gain is going to hurt somebody, hurt people, you know, a lot more. $10 a month, you know?
Yeah, so if you don't work weekends, I'm just saying, you don't accept days weeks, and you probably work five days a week, or four weeks, you know, out of a month, $20. You know, the dollar a day, because you're only getting paid, you're only charging the dollar now, right?
Like I said, that's somebody, that's going to hurt somebody, you know, like you said, trying to pay off welfare and work at Popeyes, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and also, you're talking about cutting back the service, well, you know, like, you know, why choose the ferry, like, if that's a free ride, well, then you could, you could shut down the Belle Chase drawbridge for four or five hours a night and use the other highway, that's the same thing.
No, no, no.
Why would you not consider closing out the drawbridge and save money on the...
Let me just suggest this, I'll make a suggestion.
That ferry is important to people as, as, you know...
I'll make this one the easy one, the drawbridge is a state bridge, so that's why we want to do that.
The state supplements the ferries, okay?
It's, it's a state ferry, state bridge. All right, but the state is trying to get out of the ferry system completely, there are a few ferries in that state right now. We're the only power to provide that service, you spoke about the hardship on the working man, but we've got over 500 parish employees, we saved all of their jobs. Very proud of the council, working together, we got along, and we did what we had to do to save all of the jobs in the parish. But I think if you go back and study the history, and I've been telling people this over and over, and I guess I'm going to have to keep saying it, if you go back 25 years, you didn't have the board taking a part of the parish money, you didn't have the school board taking a part of that parish money, you didn't have the fire department taking a part of that parish money, sheriff's department, and a hospital board. So, you've had a decentralization of government, and yet, they want the government, or parish, as we call it, to provide the same services when we're not, we've been, five other entities are taking a portion of that money, of your taxpayers' money, and I think that's got to, you know, it's got to resonate with the public to make them understand that, and so, if you don't make adjustments, then the parish employees are going to lose their jobs. And that's where we're trying to, because this year we got it bought, next year, price fall, $20 a barrel to that, could go further down, I hope not, but if it does, you know, we need to start making preparations now for the future. It's like you talk about hurricanes and the fire scouts, be prepared. Let's not wait until it's there, let's try to, you know, make sure that we have something set up on a rainy day, a surplus, in order to tie us still to keep jobs, as you said. Just, you know, you might have to spend a little bit more, get a little bit more to keep that job. And I think that's, I don't want to speak for the council, but I think that's the message that they would like to get out, and that's the message the administration wants to get out.
You know, the increase in revenue is, you know, if it's, if it's not going to be, you know, I don't want that, you know, if it's not that much of an increase, that, you know, you know, that, that is worse, you know, like, somebody, you know, $20 a week from somebody could be, you know, a lot of money, you know, as you said, maybe like someone like me, it would, you know, could be a big deal, but, uh...
We're just here to get, get ideas, and I just don't know right now. That's why we, that's why we're meeting, to get people opinions on how they feel about it, and maybe when a council meet, they may take all this into consideration, they come with a different plan, a plan B, I don't know, but in order to, to understand how people feel about it, we have to, we have to meet. And so, I don't want to leave out here tonight and say that it's definite, because nothing's definite yet. All this is being proposed, you know, and like I said, even with the teachers, you know, I know they ride the bus and they go on to Phoenix, because somebody told me it's hard to get teachers over there, and if we put a dollar, that going to make it hard to get teachers, I say, well, they start starving, they'll go over there.
And then, if you, like you said, you start giving, you know, you give a break to this one and that one, you know?
Yeah, and it never stops.
Might as well just not do it at all.
And that was not proposed, because somebody even proposed allowing Sabanar people, allowing all plant people to ride free, and people from Sabanar, Orleans-Jackson, to pay $2, I say, well, now, you already complaining about the ferry's off schedule, we're going to be all day checking paradise, you know, you from Orleans, okay, you go, you gotta pay $2, you from Jackson, $2, you from Black, you're free, we'll be all day doing it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll... I know people that, that live here, that work in Sabanar, people from Sabanar come down to work here.
That's correct.
And, you know...
That's correct, that's correct, and I, yeah, and that's, that's the issue, another issue. So, people, you know, they have these ideas, and I appreciate their ideas, but some of them are not practical, you know, just to charge, let everybody have a ride free, everybody's have to pay for it, we can't do that. You know, so we're trying to make sure we're fair, and that going to go to everyone, everybody, pay their fair share, even those who are disabled, on Medicare, we give them a discounted rate, if not free, I don't know.
And at Chalamet, they got a box, and if you got a $20 bill, you pay $20, they don't give you change. Drop it in that box, if you've got a $5 bill, you drop it in that box, they will not give you change. So, if you go on Chalamet Ferry, you better bring the right change, you're not going to get your nifery.
Think about that, about Chalamet Ferry, a place that is, you know, when you get the Chalamet Ferry and you drop that money in that box, you already own the ferry, basically. So, you can't turn around and come off, so they've gotten your money already, so there's nothing you can do but ride that ferry, and if it's just you, you give them a nice tip. But with Black, when we trying to, you know, we're working on that, just a dollar, instead of $2 per vehicle and a dollar for age, if you have, you're in your wife, and let's say you have two kids, you know, that's, that's what, $4 plus $2 for your vehicle, that's $6. It's cheaper going on a cruise ship than a rocket ferry, it's Chalamet, that's true. But some people do it every day, and with Chalamet, it was no public hearing. It's like, okay, this is our fee, cross it or go another, another way.
They prioritize it.
Oh, kind of like that tax on the, for that portland over there, huh, but I got it. We need to vote on that, you know?
I was rich on that one, buddy, I was rich 100% on that.
So, what's the mechanism for collecting the money? Do we, do we know that yet, or?
What I'm proposing, I'm looking into it, it's a box, it's a clear box, with a little slit on the top, and we're going to have a sign, exact change on it, and no bill over 10, okay? So, if somebody come over to 10, we're trying to fix it where the employee would have maybe $20 at all times in his hand to give change, so, so that's something we're looking at. So, it's not a perfect system, but it's a system we're looking into. But this one with the clear box, you can see exactly what's going in there, and I know some people had issues with the decade for the money they pocket and all that, so we're trying to address that.
Michael, if, if we did have the box, what would be the procedure as far as making a deposit, and who would actually...
That's a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, almost similar to what we're doing now, the only difference is instead of decade for the money in the pocket, they put it in that box, and then the procedure, when you, when it was coming on the, get on board, take out the pocket, and give it to whoever, y'all give it to the department.
And bring it out to the...
Yeah, and bring it to the captain, so that's where they take it out the box and give it to the captain instead of out the pocket. So, at the same, the only procedure that's different is the money going to the box instead of the pocket.
Are they still going to take it out the box and give it to the captain?
That's correct, that's correct.
Well, what about if we give them the captain the box? Well, I guess what I'm saying to you, that's a little bit better off you are, and... Right, so the captain's responsible for the ship, he's responsible for everything, whether he wants to cross the fog or not, right? Right. So, we should be responsible for the money. We hand, we, I mean, we handed the money out, if that can't bring it up, we might have to bring it down that he gives or something.
The only thing, I mean, that's a good idea, but the only thing, if you dealing with $1,500 a day, that's just $1,500 at box, at what, at all a day.
I know, but it's up to, well, when did it go down?
They go upstairs, every trip, they go upstairs, give it to the captain.
Well, there you go, same thing, just bring the box.
But they just give us cash to the captain.
Yeah, they give us cash.
But this way, they bring the whole box, captain is the key to the box, he responsible for, you know? So, if there's an audit, the only thing that worries us is the change situation, you know, because we're going through the 50 cents, we got to be sure we have 50 cents.
I think we like a lot of that. I think, I would, even when it come out to, to disabled and 65, personally, I would rather see them just ride free than 50 cents, that is my opinion now, which means nothing.
No, I agree with you, I agree with you.
I would rather see free than 50 cents.
That's the one that they require by law to do.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I wasn't suggesting shutting down the bridge, I was just making a point, that the ferry is just as important as that, you know, I was just making a point, I don't...
I wasn't changing, literally, I just thought that's what you said.
No, I mean, I, you know, I'm just making a point, you know, he's just, well, you know, you're going to cut service on the ferry.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a, a comment in regards to the increase versus, I understand the increase in fees, but you're also taking away services. And my daughter rides that ferry five days a week, and I hear more complaints than enough about her when there's only one ferry running, and she misses that ferry by...
Two cars.
Two cars, or whatever it is.
And it's another hour.
And it's because there's only one ferry running, and that she's got to wait for the next cycle? That, you know, that, I'd rather pay you another dollar and keep that extra ferry running than just go down to one ferry during rush hour morning and evening. That's, that's ridiculous, that's peace of mind, and then aggravation factor.
And I, and I would like to interject, keep in mind that this, and I'm not trying to kick the can on the body, but I do want you to understand that they knew about that ferry having to be serviced for at least two years, maybe three, and it was waited, it waited until right before change in the administration to put it on a dry dock, knowing full well that it would be on a dry dock quite sometimes. So, that's, you know, one of the reasons why we've had an off year with the ferry system, but I think now that we have that Pride back, and then we have the other one that should be coming back going forward, and so, I think you can, God willing, look forward to better service in the future, but we were sort of...
You were talking about, you were talking about going down to one ferry all the time here in Belle Chase, am I correct?
Yeah.
Going down during rush hour in the morning and evening would be disastrous.
Yeah, and that's why we're discussing it, because it was proposed to eliminate the split shift. And listen, I ride the ferry every morning also, so I know the aggravation of sitting in that line, and, you know, missing one or two calls, I know the aggravation, I really do, and, you know, we're looking into that. With the Pride, we're using more fuel, but you're getting more cars. With the, with the Pointe du Hasse, you're getting 35 cars instead of 70 cars, but you're saving and paying for fuel. So, it's like, you know, we have to weigh the difference, and after we present everything, we're going to look at it, and if it's, if it's, I spoke to Julie about it last week, if it gets to a point where traffic is just that backdrop, and we're running out of that 35 passenger, we will park that and run the Pride to make sure we're leaving, leaving all that traffic, so we're discussing all of that. So, it's not like we're just going to say, hey, this is it, y'all stay in line, sit there hour and a half. So, we're just trying to get all the entities, all of, everything all together, everyone presented, and then whatever the best solution is, that's what we're going to do. But I ride that ferry every day now, I never did at first, since I got this job, I'm riding it every day, and I'm, I'm in a line at 7 o'clock every morning, just to make sure, I work to 8 o'clock, but I know if I miss one ferry, I probably, you know, may not get there on time, so I understand what you're saying.
But that goes kind of with everything too, I mean, I work downtown, if I don't leave my house at 7 o'clock, or before 7 o'clock in the morning, it takes me an hour to get downtown, so I mean, you know, there is traffic. I mean, we're not going to eliminate traffic completely, and hopefully we get a, the boat, where it gets efficient enough, where we can get people in and out within 30 to 45 minutes, but, you know, sometime it might be an hour. I mean, that's, there's rec on the GNO, and, you know, it takes me an hour and 15 minutes, hour and 20 minutes to get downtown from Belle Chase, so I mean, it's, there is, I mean, we just live in an area now that the traffic's all over.
And we talked about last week, the days, let's say like, when they pick up a call and tell the East Bank, we know those trucks, two or three trucks, they occupy the ferry, so we're looking at even on those days, running a Pride, because that will help us on those days, if there's a, whatever, I can't remember these guys go over there. But on those days, we'll run the Pride, all the other days, we'll have the smaller ferry. So, we're looking at everything, everything, believe me, everything.
But it's a little, little different now with, with traffic and, and the ferry not running, if, you know, the, the ferry's not running, and... the 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 ferry's not running and, you know, like you 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 gotta go down to Phoenix, you know, or or to uh uh the cold uh terminal down there, you know, it's, you know, and the ferry's not running, you gotta go through New Orleans or whatever, you know, you you could end up losing your job, I mean, and it's, you're you're running around the uh the other way, you know, and everything, so I'm just saying that you can't compare that to. That ferry is pretty important to a lot of working people.
We're gonna, we're gonna make sure it's fair.
It's not like, you know, leaving early, you know, I'd have to, you know, actually, the reason I moved to Belchay's heart, I I moved to the West Bank was the ferry. Back back, you know, uh, forty years ago, it was.
It would be the small ferry, not the big one?
We're looking into that. Big, let me, right now, we're trying to make sure that Blackwater Ferry Government works efficiently and this ferry is put a big burden on the budget. We wanna make sure that there's always a ferry running. Even when both treyers broke at the same time, we we went all over the world to find a ferry. We found a little ten passenger ferry. It was, but guess what, they got people to work and it it started moving traffic. And so it's almost like, do I, you know, and it costs us a hundred fifty dollars per day. But I'm a little afraid because we had the concerns of the people of Blackwater. I'm gonna say, hey, listen, we're not getting anything, just deal with it or with Shaomette or Pointe L'Hasse. But we're trying to get something, although it wasn't the best, but it was something, and we had people in line who were working and they appreciated it. And we even had the the employees, we made an agreement with the port to allow the employees to walk across the port boat to come to work. So we was steady working, it wasn't like we were just saying, hey, it is what it is, take it or leave it. So it's not that we're sitting here and say, do something, let's run this one boat, whether you like it or not, that's not even an issue. Issue is to make sure that we have the best of both worlds, that the employees uh keep a job, keep a ferry running, and that the public can have something. And like I said, on days where when garbage trucks are or when occupy the ferry, we're considering running a pride. That may be one or two days a week with the pride running and three days with the smaller ferry. And that's just something we throw out. So hopefully we can get the best of both worlds everybody, but we will have a ferry. And it may be inconvenient, but it's, you know, it it it, that's what it is, it's the real world.
You're right, I've I've been here almost twenty-eight years working for the parish and I will say, one thing they've always done versus Shaomette and Canal Street and all of that is try to provide for the public, no matter what the cost, what the expense, they've always tried to provide for the public. And I mean, now times have changed and then, you know, s- some of the stuff you you can't provide for like you used to. But I will say the parish has always tried to pro- provide for the public.
Captain, I know there's issues with the uh with pride this year, but how many days this year do you think we had all three ferries in full service?
Wasn't long, wasn't long at all, but when we got it back, that's when we had a brother break and broke the shaft on the other one, yeah, it wasn't long.
So typically a year you'd expect at least one ferry to be out quite a bit.
Well, not the other, for maintenance, for certifications.
We try to, we try to do all of that while the other boats running. Then we have two boats up here.
We're trying not to shut down the boats hard, because that's every three months, we have to inspect boats every three months.
Um, breakdowns, you never know, when something runs twenty hours a day, something's gonna break eventually, you know, it's just, things happen, but um but we have never had it to where we just shut down for regular general maintenance, we're always back counting both during the day or we did it at night when the boat shut down for general maintenance, all changes.
I guess my, I guess my point is, you know, it's not that often we have three boats running at full capacity, you know, uh.
Right.
Most of the year, we only wanted two boats, because we have code squad certifications, maintenance, whatever may be, a regular, you know, just a breakdown. So a lot of the times, you don't even really notice, but we're only wanting two boats. So it's not a big, big decrease in services.
Actually, with the smaller boat, you move vehicles faster, you know, you you actually, you're not moving as many at one time, but it's actually moving quicker. You load it quicker, unload it quicker, and it gets across the river quicker, because you can tie it up swiftly. You know, even though the other boat takes takes more, but when you had to pull loads on both sides of the river, looking at a long time. Right, you know, because it takes long to get over there, long to tie, long to unload it, then load it. With a smaller boat, it does move traffic quicker, and we have seen that when the pride was on the shit door getting new ends and all that, the point of hash was keeping up pretty good with the traffic, it was it was going well, because it just, it's a quicker operation.
But I find the pride right right now is uh, it seems like the uh, the 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 ferry crew, I guess it is, they they've got it down pat now, but it's it's loading much faster than, you know, years ago, I guess guess they have to get used to it or whatever, but uh.
Well, I mean, we we have a big turnaround on that thing, so.
It gets uh.
It's just.
I mean, I I don't use the ferry that much, but it just seems uh.
Maybe the, maybe the people are driving that.
It it seems, you know, I don't know, but it's, it it's uh, when the ferry was first put there, you know, it just seemed like it was, it was it was taking so long to to get it loaded and get across the river that it was, it was, you know, it was worse than a small ferry. But but now, you know, it it been working pretty good whenever whenever I've gone on it, you know.
But it it does, it takes a lot of maintenance and a lot of fuel for that big boat to get here.
What uh what I'm hoping happens as a result of this is that uh the services will not be cut other than the next split shift, but reliability will improve because of the fact that we'll have the spare boat there to be able to interact with the regular boat, whatever, which one has the time is running. So I'm hoping that the reliability factor goes up, because it's been sometimes where no ferry was there, as you mentioned earlier, you had to go point of hash or drive to New Orleans. So what I'm hoping to happen is that that reliability increases.
Is there a timeframe, you're looking to make a decision?
On all of this?
Yes.
By January the first.
That's why we appreciate y'all coming tonight, you know, democratic process to try and hear what you have to say, number one. And secondly, for you to carry a message back to your neighbors, your friends, as to what uh information you've been given tonight. Because so many times you get the wrong information out there and gossip, so, so we appreciate you spreading the word for us.
I do, I do anticipate this going to a vote, the first council meeting in December, we only have one, second's canceled. But the first, uh, second Thursday of the summer, um, is the summer town's council meeting. Um, so there may be some amendments to it, if we discuss it and decide to make amendments to the ordinance that's on the table. But uh I would suggest if you had any really other concerns, um, to go to that council meeting and voice those concerns. Because once it goes into effect and it lays over for ten days and then it becomes law, so then like Director Jaws and the President said, take effect in January.
It's the same, more, more people aren't interested, just stick around, it's the same. You know, we got half of us are from the government, you know, and uh, but we appreciate you coming as a teacher. And we're gonna try to get you there as quick as possible, because I know the kids are just waiting for it.
I would say it's like, as teachers know, we have to go back before these days, is there anyone possibly like get like a voucher kind of thing, or do you like pay like a week or so in advance? Where, because man, I know, like, we don't really have cash on us, we don't really need cash every day, or that's something like you don't think about.
How many teachers work from the West Bank?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Well, I don't know how many are, most of us.
You know, like they.
How many, how many, y'all do have a bunch of kids.
But they've also been asked how to take that bus on six days for their duty or meetings, it's not, you have to be ready to be on the bus on the first day.
Let's say with a coupon, a coupon, not much we could threaten being in there.
That's another thing, I mean, that's, that's the only thing, you're looking at stuff like that.
I'm sure the state probably has thousands of them left from the toll booths up on, on the bridge. Just ask them, I'm sure there'd be more than a little bit of them to take.
The state, I don't know, we're gonna see, I'm writing it down, we're writing it down.
They probably saw.
Yeah, just rapidly.
That's uh, someone who went there uh before with the toll booth, uh getting a little, the little guns, scanning and all that, so.
Anytime, I was gonna ask for money, but if y'all, if you're not doing a coupon book.
We we can talk about that, we just wrote that down on the town, yeah, that way you get a uh thirty day supply, it just grew by thirty, whatever. And uh that way you just get a coupon.
That'd be easier for me. It would also cut down if you're concerned about the decades handling them off.
That uh.
Yeah, we have the coupon books now, that you can buy.
Oh, really?
Right now, yeah, it was at price, that's what the coupon books are.
Is that going to be removed from the processes?
As we think about removing it.
Oh, they're gonna remove it, they're saying remove it at half price, but if you bought it, they're making it full price.
Well, that's something we have to do.
Well, that's what we thought about.
That's, I mean, I. If they do it electronic, it's a dirty fault, it shows up, you know, it's, you know, like that.
Did you, did you?
Like I'm saying.
Yes, sir. He said, right now, we have uh half price coupons, uh, so, I mean, you just keep that, make it full price, you know, I mean, same thing.
If they have, they have a price coupon, we're gonna burn all that, start fresh.
Oh, that's what I mean, I mean, it's the same, it's the same idea.
Sounds cool.
No, I, I, that, 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 that's.
Well, yeah, because the red, yellow stickers and all that, we're trying to, we're trying to start fresh, that way there's, there's no discrepancies, nobody can see something done underhanded. We're trying to just cover all our tracks and and I understand what you're saying, you know, we were discussing it just now, even with the coupon books, we gotta be careful, because, you know, people are so smart now, they duplicate stuff, they're doing all, you know, doing all kinds of crazy stuff, so we discuss that right, even as we speak. But uh we we might have to take that one, because it's a great idea, it's how it presents, so I'm looking into that. See, nothing is installed, so please don't leave out the thing, it's it's a tough thing, it's not. I told you when I read, first time I did, just because I'm in this mess, I did create this mess. This is badly, I think I'm gonna wipe it to that. We just try to clean up this mess.
You haven't said anything yet, you got anything to say?
Uh, I just uh saw the news this morning, St. John Parish, and we don't have, I just got elected to the Compliment Board for that. I'm trying to talk to all the people and get their thing going, for me, I think there's information, these guys, you owe the state, you owe you do?
No, 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 no.
The parish, you know, you know state give where?
No, it's gonna state money here.
No state money?
It's all locally operated.
Okay, well, I was good, I'm glad, I wanted to just learn how I can to try to educate my people back in St. John Parish, what could we do to get a ferry going? So I drove, I drove here to see uh what you guys are trying to do with the ferry, that's why I'm here.
So why, let me, can I ask you, why did you guys cut the ferry?
State cut the prop.
That's where they built that Ed Ed Guard Bridge, they took the ferry away?
The others, bridge was open, right, but they they kept the ferry going after, after Katrina, it was damaged with the pontons were damaged and the economy had gone for a couple of years and it couldn't reach, cut the pontons. And and to answer your question, I'm not getting the right, I'm not getting true answers, that's why, I'm gonna find out. Trying to get the right answers, I don't think I'm gonna get it.
We're gonna help in any way we can, you aren't involved in Police Sheriff Association yet?
I've never been sworn in, just got in.
Yeah, you need to swear and come to the Police Sheriff Association and uh, that'd be a good, this your first time coming, coffee?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be a good uh groundbreaking for all of it, because that'll be all of the sixty-four parishes, local governments, and their committees in the, throughout the day. And uh, welcome to public service, sure you wanna do it?
I'll be doing it anyhow, sir. We have a charge, either let me or no, like, I'm gonna do the hell I do.
Oh, that's good.
Louisiana needs a lot of help, guys.
Yeah, I agree.
Starts with, it starts with, you gotta be warm and make changes, you gotta be flexible, you don't have a whole lot of that right now.
Yeah, we agree, I, let me speak for myself, I agree. So, but I think we got a uh a good start, we got a new government coming in in January, you know, that uh special session, they called right away. Gonna set the tone for the next four years, as to what they're gonna do with the revenue streams. Hopefully, they're gonna be able to find a way not to be able to keep cutting education and healthcare. So uh I think that, you know, if he can get along with the Republican on House and Senate, and then, you know, if you think about it, a lot of those Republicans in those Houses and those Senates, he, well, even too long ago, Democrats, you know, they switched over. So they're gonna come to the middle somewhere and I would move a gun for.
So you guys have no state funding for the ferry right now? Yeah, we get a little bit of grants from the federal government.
So there's nothing from the state, I thought.
If we do, it's de minimis.
Yeah.
I wanna get, so y'all will go and share us, you could cause operations, everything.
Yeah, we just went through that two nights ago, but if you want to.
That's possible, do that.
Uh, we got a budget that we can give you a copy of, it's in that, it's in this library right there, I don't have a key.
We have two locations, we operate three ferries, um, we've only collected a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars last year revenue, and it cost about uh, what?
Almost five million.
Four, five million to operate all three, uh, we did a one day audit, we did a one day, we did a one day audit and uh there were almost fourteen hundred vehicles that crossed, we only collected four hundred and eighteen dollars.
I think.
So, there's a lot, there's a lot of old, you know, vouchers and red stickers, yellow stickers that have exemptions. So that's why we went collecting a bunch of that revenue, that's why the revenue was only a hundred and fourteen thousand. That's why we have proposals to do a dollar each way, if you do that, it's projected to collect about seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that's just for one ferry. So if you had the other ferries, the other ferry doesn't have as many passengers, but you could probably estimate half of that, so another three fifty, so look at over ninety dollars, maybe one, maybe two, maybe.
And then if you look at our fuel bill, uh, for the three, one point eight million, so we're not covering enough, we're not covering our fuel.
Right.
So did you decide to get into the ferry business?
Not to make money. It's gonna, it's gonna, this, I mean, if you had one ferry in St. John and um and that coverage is pretty much given to you, you don't have to pay bond on it or anything. I mean, you're probably looking at going debt, a couple million dollars a year, two to three million dollars a year. That's just a guess.
I think he had a figure on one of the boats, what was it, the Pointe L'Hasse or something?
Actually, I I did it on all.
That was just, that was just fuel prices.
That's the fuel.
I went on a ferry, also, I went to Pointe L'Hasse, made a loop, came back, I could have parked the truck and walked across the port, you know, and I get in the ferry line, I won't jump the line, I sit in the line like everyone else, and so I feel everybody's paying on East Bank and the West Bank. But um I would rather, I would rather sit in the line and we have a ferry than not have a ferry at all. And so even if it's that ten passenger that we have to pay for, to make sure all people have something, or the thirty-five, or the seventy-five, we're gonna make sure that there's ferry services on the lower end and all some of this thing, so uh be patient with us. It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect plan, but it's a plan. And it's like everything else, you may not do everything you want, but you're gonna get something, I promise you that. So, Paul, if you want to say before we can go?
No, once again, we really appreciate you coming tonight, if you have any other questions you wanna talk afterwards, we copied everything down. Or if you think of something, just be sure and call at the office, Shane Landry, um, nine, two nine seven five thousand. The parish law, they'll hook you up. And uh, once again, please disperse the information you've given tonight and share with your neighbors and so that they can call if they have any suggestions. I appreciate the constant numbers being here tonight, and I correct as in all.
Okay, well, just to answer your question, sir, uh, part of the reason with the federal money is, my understanding is we have grants available, but we can't afford to match, and that's why we can't get the money. So I think that's part of our problem, if I understood what Ms. Hill just said.
Correct.
The other, before we get out of here, a ferry catch.